...easier to get out of the race and vote for opponents than run.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the city council workshop for April 22, 2019. Call on Kristen Rush to do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Proton Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Okay, all present and accounted for. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're going to have a presentation of the Arvada Center for Arts and Humanities Space Usage Study. And to kick that presentation off is the executive director and CEO, I'm sorry, president and CEO of the Arvada Center for Arts and Humanities, Philip Snead.
Thank you very much. I will beg your indulgence ahead of time. I have a cold and if I start coughing, please forgive me. So, thank you all for the opportunity to come before you and present the final presentation of this study. And first of all, I'd like to draw your attention to our new logo and our new branding. We have invested in a new brand for the Arvada Center, which includes a new mission, vision, and values as well. And this is an effort that went on for several months and the board has approved. And so I just want to draw your attention to that and we'll be sharing that mission and vision with you briefly as well. I know you've received this already, so I won't go over everything that you're going to see. So, just to remind you of why we're here, we presented the first part of the study at our joint dinner in November. At that point, we presented mostly an architectural study and the cost estimates and the net revenue projected from the use of the space was not ready at that time. So, I'm going to review the need and purpose of the study and then turn it over to our colleague, Chris Weinman, from Simple Brown Design to go over the results of the study, including those net revenue projections, and then turn it over to Board Chair Ken Felman to speak about moving forward. So, the new mission of the Arvada Center. The Arvada Center celebrates and elevates the human condition with engaging arts, humanities, education, and entertainment that expand the cultural landscape for everyone who visits us. The vision is that the Arvada Center will be a nationally recognized leader in creating high-quality arts and humanities experiences that nourish the ability to explore and express the full range of human emotion. And our core values come down to quality, passion, inclusion, and creativity. And we wanted to start with this because everything that we do needs to respond to the mission. And everything that we do should in some way support the mission. So, I wanted to share that new mission with you, recently board-approved. So, we are looking for, in our request to use the entire space of the Arvada Center, we are looking for a physical space to match who we are and what we want to be. Our story, and this was crafted with our staff and the branding firm that we used, there's something special about the arts and humanities, something transcendent. They can enrich who we are and inspire who we want to become. Ultimately, they appeal to the best in all of us, exciting our senses and enhancing our state of mind. And then, we want to state that the ability of the center to utilize 100% of the facility demonstrates a world-class commitment to the arts. And I want to suggest that that world-class commitment is on behalf of not only our nonprofit, but the city of Arvada, a place like no other to deliver our mission. And how does using 100% of the building help deliver our mission? First of all, it engages more people. Tens of thousands of more people can be served by arts and humanities events every year. It also allows us to fight increased competition within SCFD. Many of you know that we are one of about 28 organizations within Tier Two of SCFD. We used to receive the highest percentage of funding of any Tier Two organization. But over the last few years, as the Children's Museum of Denver has built a new building and expanded their programmatic offerings, as well as Wings Over the Rockies Butterfly Pavilion, also a Tier Two, is in the middle of a capital campaign to build a new facility, which will also expand their revenue and attendance, we have dropped from number one in Tier Two funding to number three. And in terms of a percentage of the Tier Two financial pie, you can see the numbers. Two years ago, we received 9.4% of total Tier Two funding. This year, this last year, it was 7.8%. And as our competition continues to expand in the number of people they can reach and the amount of revenue they bring in, it is a limited pie of a certain amount of money. So, as one organization grows in their funding, the rest of us shrink. So, if we don't have the capacity to expand, we will, by definition, shrink within the SCFD funding pool. And then the last point simply, that the metro Denver area is one of the top states and metro areas in the nation in terms of spending, but there's also a lot of competition and a lot of venues per capita, almost more than anywhere else in the country. So, we need to continue to refresh and rebrand and maintain strong and growing programs. It's very difficult to maintain the status quo. It's really a question of growing or shrinking, at least in relation to our competitors.
Okay, a question from Mr. Marriott.
Sorry, can I, if you could flip that slide back real quick. Sorry, I was trying to-
That's okay. I'm sorry to-
Um, I just wondered if you could give me an idea, you've got the Tier Two funding, the percentages of that funding that the Arvada Center received. Can you put numbers on that instead of just percentages?
As I recall, the total Tier Two pie is about 14 million. Does that sound right, Clark? Yeah, it grows every year. So, our dollars are going to grow with the growth of the tax base, but they're not going to grow as fast as others. So, this drop-
That's the question. Is the dollar amount increased from 2016 to 2018 or gone down?
No, it has gone down. So, each, if we're looking at a $13 or $14 million piece of the pie, you know, you can do the math, and each percentage point is going to represent about $130,000, $140,000 of that. So, that drop represents about $200,000.
So, that pie doesn't get bigger, or hasn't gotten bigger?
Right. And again, this is relative to the tax base because the whole tax base for SCFD is growing. So, we'll realize a portion of that growth, but just a smaller portion than others. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Philip, I guess the question I was, and if you don't have the information, it's okay. But just, in the two examples you gave, how many total dollars did you get in SCFD funding in 2016 and 2018?
This is approximate, but I think we're looking at a drop from about $1,150,000 to around $950,000 or $975,000.
Okay.
And those are, don't quote me, but those are close.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ford?
That was my question.
Okay.
Continuing?
Yes.
So, how does having it help deliver our mission? It creates financial stability for us. The Arvada Center has the ability, as you'll see, as we move forward and we talk about our new five-year model, we are reaching a point where we can balance our budget without additional city help. And we're very proud of that. And we're doing that faster than we thought we'd be able to do it. But the ability to grow beyond that, to expand, to grow our reserves, to create a greater financial cushion, is very, very limited. So, as we become more financially stable with larger reserves, that creates more stability and financial certainty for the city as well. When we're hovering at break-even, there's always a risk that we're going to start dropping below the line again and eating into our reserves, which I don't think is good for the center or ultimately for the city in terms of preserving its asset. Having 100% of the building also increases the diversity of what we can offer. We can offer more kinds of programming, more diverse programming. We have the spaces to take more artistic risk and cushion the financial risk side of it, and we have increased revenue opportunity. And also, the new, moving into the 100% of the building allows us to be more engaged, more flexibility, reach different audiences, respond in a more nimble fashion to market forces, and simply create a space that's clearly one brand for everybody who visits. And as we say at the end, from our branding to our storage, we are looking for one mission, one purpose, one building. And that's the ultimate goal. And unless there are any questions from me, I will turn it over to Chris Weinman from Simple Brown Design, who has been our partner in doing this and who has been working with the center for at least 20 years, back to the master plan of 2000, 2001. So, Chris Weinman.
Ms. Ford first.
Philip, I have one question regarding SCFD. We know that most likely there will be more cities adding arts venues to their cities. How is it determined, again, whether it becomes a Tier Two or Three? Generally, it won't probably be a One, but-
No, there's no way to, for us to get into Tier One, except through the reauthorization process, which happens approximately every 12 years. So, 2028 will be the next opportunity for us to try to get into Tier One, because that is, those Tier One organizations are written into the legislation by name that the voters approve. Getting from Tier Three into Tier Two is simply a process of, I mean, the basic process is meeting a certain income threshold, which goes up every year based on a two-year trailing CPI index or something, but it's about $1,007,000. So, the organization has to have a budget of a, they calculate it to the penny, but it's approximately $1,007,000 to get into the bottom of Tier Two. And then, as organizations grow, they can move up if they're growing faster than organizations above them.
Okay. And what do you think, you know, the probability of more organizations becoming Tier Three or Tier Two, where the pie would be divided or could be divided in the future?
Tier Two is growing. When SCFD was created, I think there were, does anybody remember the number of organizations? Something like 13 organizations in Tier Two, and now I think it's 28. So, it does grow. Sometimes organizations will, their budget will shrink and they'll drop out of Tier Two, back to Tier Three. But in general, the direction is in, it's one direction only that Tier Two keeps getting larger and larger. Now, as organizations come in from the bottom, because they're the lowest in revenue and attendance, they don't get as big a piece of the pie, but they still chip away at what the rest of us get. So, in order, and again, if we're looking at $1,000,000 to $1,200,000 for the Arvada Center from SCFD, that's about 10% of our revenue. And so, that's a really important chunk of money. And if we can't grow, we really do risk losing share and seeing our, certainly our growth in funding shrink compared to everyone else. But if it gets bad enough, our actual dollars could shrink as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Since we're talking SCFD, I just had a couple of questions. So, is 1.2 the magic number? I mean, is that the number that you're hoping that you can budget or count on through the end of time, or is that-
Well, no, we hope, I mean, again, I think over the last 20 years, the SCFD tax, total tax collections have grown by an average of about 5% a year. I think they budget for 3.6 or 3.8 to be conservative. But I think this past year growth is, I think it's growing, I think it's like 5.2% ahead of last year at this time. So, the number will keep going up. But so do expenses. And the question is, can we grow as fast as we, without expanded attendance and revenue, how fast can we grow? And will we be getting a smaller and smaller piece of the tax growth every year?
So, that leads, you must have read my mind. That leads me into the very next question, which is, so let's pretend that you have 100% usage of the building and your attendance and revenue is not increasing because your expenses have increased, because you've taken on more teachers or, you know, expenses to, you know, to make sure that you can fill all those slots. Then you're, it seems like you're chasing your tail and you really haven't accomplished anything with regards to SCFD, but it seems to be an important part of the conversation every time we talk.
When Chris presents firstly, a review of the architectural study and then a review of the net revenue projections, you'll see that we are projecting quite a healthy percentage of the new revenue as net. So, it brings us new net revenue, but it also, and then, because the revenue increases and the attendance increases, those are the two factors that determine SCFD funding. So, we're going to be able to increase SCFD funding through attendance and revenue and also simply revenue, net revenue for new operations.
Right. And what if the programming that you think is going to fill that hole doesn't fill the hole, then?
You know, it's, all we could, all any of us, I think, can do is rely on our history. So, for the purpose of this exercise, one of the things we've decided to do in projecting new net revenues is we would look at the programs that we already have with a demonstrated demand and simply show what we could earn from expanding and adding to those programs. So, for example, we keep a list every year, a waiting list of schools that we can't accommodate because we simply run out of space. So, we've tried to base our projections on a conservative and realistic look at simply expanding the current programming rather than, we didn't want to show you projections that were based on some risky new program, but simply take what we already do and do more of it.
Okay. And I'll, so I've got other questions around that, but I'll wait until we get further into the financial conversation. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Ready for the transition?
Okay.
There you go. Thank you, Philip. Mr. Mayor, members of council. Great to see you all. The assignment that we were given was to evaluate the potential for the building, the Arvada Center, to utilize the space currently occupied by Arvada Events. We tried to prioritize the areas of greatest need. And as Philip indicated, one of the things that makes life easier for us is when we can design around an organization that has an operating history and a track record of programming. So, you're not picking things out of thin air and saying, "Wouldn't it be great if?" You're taking advantage of the fact that they've got such a track record in this market. It was our job to identify the most plausible reuse strategies. What were the best ways for us to take advantage of the space in the building? And then to quantify likely construction costs and the likely impact on the center's revenue and expenses. So, we affirmed the center's priorities, working with Philip and the staff and obviously with the board and yourselves, to maintain and strengthen the mission, to improve income opportunities, ticketed theater and events, education capacity, meeting and event rental, SCFD revenue, and donor cultivation. So, those are each a different bucket of revenue that can be enhanced with the facility. We wanted to provide increased flexibility and responsiveness to the market and opportunities so that, over time, the center could adjust and, as Philip said, be nimble about its programming. So, we've completed a diagrammatic plan model, not full design documents here, but a diagrammatic plan. We provided that model to two general contractors for cost evaluation. Each of those are firms that our firm has worked with and that has worked on other cultural facilities so that they had some basis for comparison and understanding. And we helped Clark identify and develop an operating pro forma to assess the impact of that increased facility usage. That included a conversation with a national-level consultant who does this across the country to assess that methodology. What he did was to agree that certainly, based on the center's history, the staff has the best ability to forecast the future. So, the tactics that are specific to meeting those priorities are first, to expand education facilities. As Philip indicated, every year, the Arvada Center has a backlog of opportunities for both enrollment in classes and school events. And so, beginning to increase revenue by adding capacity for classes, workshops, groups, and performances, and to support the gaps in the current space. So, for instance, if you're one of three schools, bring groups to the center for a day-long Arts Day experience, and noon time rolls around and you have got 80 to 100 school kids looking at you and saying, "Feed me," there's no space to do that. There is no space identified for school groups to sit down and have lunch, store their backpacks and their coats and those kinds of things. And so, the center staff makes do with whatever studios are available and with hallway space. We wanted to create an alternative event venue. You've currently got the main stage and the black box, but the growth of the center's programming over time has begun to extend into spaces like the History Museum, which has a comparatively large floor area, to do presentations for humanities, for history, for community education, for civic events. And so, those are squeezing into areas that they weren't designed for. It was also a tactic here to create a rehearsal space for the main stage and black box venues. Over the last couple of years, it's been possible for the production programs of the Arvada Center to begin to utilize some of Arvada Events spaces, but that's not guaranteed. And it takes revenue off the table for the production program to rehearse onstage. It squeezes ticketed performances aside. And so, creating rehearsal space for those venues is important. To right-size some meeting and event rental space, so instead of having just the lobby of the main stage as potential event space, to have something that would be available for donors and events, sponsors would be important. To increase in-house donor cultivation capabilities, if you've been to the donor lounge at the center, which is relatively new, if you're there with 10 of your closest friends, you will fill the room. And so, that caps what the development department at the Arvada Center can do in terms of promoting those relationships to donors. And last, to identify a space to create a dedicated History Museum, or consider the relocation of that to free up space within the center. So, we've looked at both of those alternatives. So, if you look at the floor plan of the center as it's currently utilized, we've highlighted in yellow the spaces that are currently allocated to Arvada Events. In the bottom center, those are office spaces. And then, as you look above to the series of ballrooms, A, which is a single-story ballroom, B, C, and D, which are double-height, Ballroom E, where we met in December in our joint meeting, and then the remaining spaces above Ballroom E and to the side are storage for tables and chairs, and then the kitchen for the events and banqueting services. On the second level, we've outlined in yellow the spaces above those rooms. So, there's no yellow above Ballroom A, because that's a single-story room, but Ballrooms B, C, and D are identified here, as well as Ballroom E. So, those are all still floors or rooms on the main floor level, but they occupy volume at the second floor level. As we discussed, when we met in December, and this plan has not fundamentally changed since that time, the proposed maximum reuse scenario for the Arvada Center event space would be, as we move from the left-hand corner, to reconfigure the current offices as administrative space for some of the Arvada Center's development staff and the growing staff that operates their programs. As we look toward the bottom center, Ballroom A and B generally would be combined as a flexible meeting and event space, so giving the center the ability to have pre-show receptions or receptions that are related to the gallery events because of that good proximity. Ballroom C and D would be combined to enable us to create two new education studios. Ballroom E, the double-height space, would be able to be developed as an education theater. And then, across the hall from Ballroom E, what are currently Studios 11A and B, we believe could be assigned more productively to a use such as the History Museum, if it were to stay on the site of the Arvada Center. That would move the History Museum closer to the front doors, give it more visibility, and it would quite honestly take better advantage of those oddly-shaped rooms than using those for education or rehearsal studios. That would mean that toward the top center, where the History Museum is currently located, it'd be possible to develop a new dance studio, a third for the center, as well as what's labeled Studio E, a new education studio. And then, as we come around clockwise, there would be an additional series of production spaces, so support for the producing entities. And most importantly, those are behind the security line that we try not to ask parents or students to go behind. So, we try not to introduce them to the backstage areas of the Arvada Center without supervision. Coming around to the bottom, below Studio E, where the new education theater would locate, we can redevelop a portion of the existing production kitchen. We would still have a concessions kitchen to support the event space, but then could outfit some of that space for costume support, wardrobe support, the things that would enable a third theater to be able to operate within the building. On the second floor, it would be possible to insert a new floor slab at the same level as the existing second floor. So, in the space currently occupied by Ballrooms B, C, and D, this would add three significant rehearsal and education studios. So, they're flexible. Depending on the time of year, they could be used by the education program or by the theater production staff. And you can see then that Ballroom E extends all the way up as a double-height space as the new education theater. Looking to the rest of the floor, there'd be an opportunity because of creating these additional education studios, to take the education studio at the top right, that is closest to the Black Box Theater in the outdoor courtyard, to create a larger donor lounge that would be accessible both to the main stage and to the black box, to give some concession support to the food operations up there, and then to expand the ceramic studio, which has a significant backlog and waitlist for people to take advantage of that. And then, we've marked Studio D below. That's the new dance studio. We've purposely put that in a space that is double-height to allow dancers to rehearse lifts without hitting their heads on the ceiling. So, the result of asking for cost estimates from our two contractors was that we got one that was more detailed, one that was higher level, that their ability to do that depends on their workload at this point. But fortunately, they both aligned. You'll see in your written copies of this that they were, we asked them to be as inclusive as they could possibly be. So, they visited the center, they studied the plans that we had given them, they looked at all of the spaces that we were talking about, they toured with Arvada Center staff, and they have broken the cost estimate out on the sheet that you see before you. So, we asked them to include not just the hard construction cost, but also the general conditions of the contractor being there on site, to allow for contingencies, both for design and estimating, as well as construction. We asked them to include the anticipated fees for a project of this scope, and then we asked them to summarize all of that. So, we're at approximately $7.5 million here of construction cost. Let me caution that that does not include any escalation because I couldn't give them a date toward which to plan for construction to occur. But that includes all of the scope that we covered in those previous diagrams. So, the new floor slab to create the second level, the new mechanical systems to feed two levels of space, and the renovation costs of all of the rest of the existing spaces. So, in summaries, that's 27,000 square feet of hard construction. The direct costs are $5.5 million. Indirect costs, like those contingencies and general conditions, are 1.9. That gets us to a total of seven and a half. Then, there are anticipated soft costs, design fees, owner's consultants for legal, soils testing, geotechnical, those kinds of things, an allowance for FFNE, furniture, fixtures, and equipment. That's a total of just over $2 million. So, the grand total is $9.5 million for combined hard and soft costs. One of the things that the plan diagram gives us is built-in flexibility. There is considerable potential here to pick and choose among those individual project components. You don't have an all-or-nothing situation here. So, depending on your functional priorities and donor interest and a capital campaign strategy, it would be possible to implement pieces of this in phases. So, for instance, one of the potential scenarios would be, let's choose not to build the new floor slab, creating a second floor. That's one of the most significant cost elements of that total seven and a half that we were talking about. In that situation, Ballroom E could be either developed as a rehearsal studio or a theater, depending on the cost appetite. You would gain two studios with extra height and volume, which can be important acoustically. The rooms outside the event space, like the ceramic space, the donor lounge, those kinds of spaces, would be treated just the same. You would have a significantly lower construction cost, and you would still have the ability to add that floor slab later and gain that additional square footage. The caveats, of course, are that you would significantly decrease your revenue potential because you wouldn't have those additional three studios at the upper floor level, and it would significantly decrease your programming options going forward because you would still have not met all of the needs for expanding education programming and rehearsal space and those kinds of things. So, two potential schedules here. Just to help clarify for us and in our thinking, as well as you, we've compared a schedule in linear order and with overlapping occupancies. So, the first kind of large task would be identifying a new site for events relocation. We allowed through the remainder of 2019- We allowed through the remainder of 2019 hypothetically for that. Somewhat overlapping with that, starting in the middle of the year, you could start designing the renovation scope. That would take approximately three-quarters. And then, design the events replacement facility after the new site had been identified. And that would also take at least nine months, which would allow construction of a new events facility to begin in the fourth quarter of 2020, and then start construction on Arvada Center renovation of the event space starting in the first quarter of 2021. That's with everything moving sequentially. The overlapping opportunity achieves some time efficiency because it would be possible to start the Arvada Center reconstruction in phases, essentially in two summer projects. But that's likely to cost more in terms of having an extended construction time and two contractor mobilizations. But the end is, the end result is essentially the same. It would be the end of first quarter 2021 before all of that work was done. So as we looked at the impact of all, and I guess I should stop there. Any questions about that methodology or the cost estimates?
Don't see any questions at this point.
Okay. I'll go ahead and talk about the assumptions that we made in terms of the operating model and the projections that we made. These are based on $2018 and current revenue and expense models. We're assuming, Mr. Jones, minimal changes to the current programs and schedules. So this does not represent a speculative growth program into a range of programming that the Arvada Center has never done before. It limits our potential, but bases assumptions in existing reality and where we have experience with real dollars and real market demand.
So just a quick question on that, then. So if you look at your current programming, and you said that there, somebody said that there was a backlog of programming that can't be fulfilled in ceramics or whatever.
Correct.
What is the growth of those programs?
So we'll talk about that in just a moment. Thank you. This is based on full programming with a two-year startup period. Some, that varies. With areas like ceramics, for instance, we have considerable experience where that is, there's less likely to be a long ramp-up period. With the addition of some potential more theater productions and those kinds of things, that's likely to have a little more extended ramp-up. The SEFD impact is based on actuals. This does not include the potential for an additional $69,000 of net revenue if the history museum were to relocate outside the center because that would free up two additional studio spaces. So the meeting and event space is just over 4,100 square feet capacity of 275 for a seated dinner and 750, up to 750 for a reception. The meeting and event space model is a caterer model similar to other cultural organizations within the Front Range, the Children's Museum, Lone Tree Arts Center, Parker Arts Culture and Events Center, Butterfly Pavilion, Wings Over the Rockies. So those organizations don't have in-house catering operations or banquets similar to what you've got right now. So you rent the space and you pay for the caterer in addition. In terms of the expense side, most expenses are captured in direct net revenue. But in order to make this the most conservative possible model, we have identified the cost for additional personnel to expand programs. And programming examples specific to performance would include a holiday review in the new theater. Many of you are familiar with the fact that holiday months are a great time, a peak-demand time. And so having a third venue to be able to program something at the center at that point looks like a very understandable way to increase revenue. Book and lecture events would be something for the education theater to be able to do. Expanded school programs. Currently, the center's school productions shift between the main stage and the Black Box. And so that creates an inherent inefficiency in terms of revenue. And we're anticipating approximately 200 rental events per year.
Question for you before you move on. What's the current dinner seating numbers for the center and the reception numbers for the center?
Let's see, maximum combined with Ballrooms A, B, C, D. Gordon, I may have to reach out to you.
Mayor, did you want for seating, a formal dinner?
Yes.
Where it's very close to 600.
600, almost 600, and this would take it down to 275? And how about receptions?
It's close to 900.
Okay.
Thank you, Gordon. I appreciate that.
Can I ask a quick follow-up on that? How often are we booking events that have the need for more than 275 sit-down at dinner?
So we have a detailed breakdown that we could share with you. It shows kind of two things, that we don't have a great number of events that reach the capacity. They're limited in number. Kind of the sweet spot, the number that we have the most of is between about 175 and 250.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So with those assumptions and limitations, I'll go ahead and show you. So if you look at the largest box in the top center, the projected revenue and net revenue is broken out in four buckets: education programs, ticketed theater and events, facility rental, and contributed income. So the projected growth in each of those areas is the revenue number. Once you subtract out the projected expenses to provide those programs, we get the direct net revenue per line. So in education, for instance, gross revenue of $378,000, direct net revenue of $242,000. The combined total of all four of those is $1.8 million in revenue and just over $1 million in direct net revenue. To the lower-left is a calculation of the SEFD impact. As Philip indicated, for the Arvada Center, that comes in two areas. One is based on attendance, paid attendance, and that revenue is projected to be $123,000. And the second is based on overall revenue earned by the center. And the projected impact of that is $93,000. So the combined impact growth of that is $217,500. Moving to the right-hand side, expenses that are outside of the net calculation above is eight full-time staff members with benefits, valued at $378,000, and hourly wages for 71, 80 hours at $118,000. So that is nearly half a million dollars in additional costs. So if you add the box up at the top center and the SEFD revenue, and then subtract the expenses, you reach a new net revenue figure of just over $730,000 annually.
Mr. Jones?
Okay, so this is net new revenue.
Correct.
So new revenue on top of current revenue with 100% usage of the facility.
With usage by the Arvada Center of 100% of the square feet, yes.
So looking at, and I'll just focus on the direct net revenue. So looking at the three categories, education and ticketed revenue are the two smallest categories, which are the two categories that have been talked about being the most benefited by 100% use of the facility. Can you explain why?
Sure. That directly relates to the mission, vision, and values that Philip articulated at the top of the presentation. So if we were simply interested in income, then we would probably spend the resources of staff time and space differently. But in order to meet the mission and vision that was articulated for the center in terms of community impact, education impact of the arts and humanities in Arvada and the Front Range, that also has an impact on contributed revenue because donors are going to be more interested in programs that achieve impact for audience members and students and families than they are for rental events, for instance. So you're not going to raise a lot of money in order to do rental events. You will use rental events in order to cultivate supporters for the mission-driven programming.
And so that's why the rental and meeting events is the highest category of revenue?
So it's certainly the highest category in terms of revenue. But that's less mission-driven for the center in terms of community impact than it would be to utilize that space for classes, arts days, those kinds of things. It's certainly a balancing act.
So I guess that's where I'm drawing, and maybe I'm just slow on this, but it seems to me that the focus should be on the education, driving revenue through education and driving revenue through theater. Because those are, people are coming in to pay for those classes and to see the theater. And why wouldn't, I guess I don't understand how those two aren't supporting, or those two are supporting, but of the new mission statement. It just feels backwards to me, and maybe I'm not listening clearly.
No, no, no. Let me say, I think those things also reflect the greatest cost in terms of staff time and program resources. And so the margin on those is lower. You're essentially subsidizing the education programming through your nonprofit status. It's not likely to generate as much income as an event where someone may come and purchase alcohol and do those kinds of things. That's just inherently a higher-margin activity. But it's less prioritized mission-wise than the education programs. So part of what this balance of expanded square footage and uses does is enable those increases on the mission and vision side while also helping to pay for some of the net cost of those.
Can we go back to the mission statement again?
Sure. Sorry, I don't have a warp speed button on the...
No, that's fine.
Did I pass? Oh. There we go. Oh, there we go.
Okay, so can you walk me through the mission statement as it relates to the direct net revenue? And why the new net revenue, the projections of the new net revenue support 100% usage of the facility?
Sure. So in order, elevating the human condition with engaging arts, humanities, education, and entertainment. So what we talked about with these investments was being able to expand arts programming, expand humanities programming. So one of the advantages of the new education theater is, for instance, to be able to host authors, lectures by artists, lectures by historians, civic events, and gatherings. Education, obviously, the creation of new education studios enables the expansion of the programming you've already got and the ability, by a matter of scale, to host more school groups per year. And entertainment, so including, you know, a broad umbrella of the events and rental revenue, as well as what goes on in the performance venues themselves.
But you say that the education, and again, I apologize if I'm not listening clearly tonight, but you said that the education piece is almost a lost leader. Because it's not, the margins on the education are so small that it's a lost leader, and it's just something that you've got to provide in order to check that education box or that community.
Ken?
If I may?
Please.
Sorry to barge in.
No, I appreciate it.
My slides are coming up here at the end, but I feel really important about at least giving my two cents to clarify your question. The net revenue for the education was like $240,000. That's not chump change.
No, no, no. No, that's net new.
It's not a minimal amount that's a lost leader. And in fact, it's the easiest area of the four for us to begin to increase revenues, even if we don't make any major changes with the physical space because...
But that's not what was said. What he said was that it was the least profitable of...
Well, that's true.
Right.
It's not a lost leader, though. At least profitable does not mean not profitable and does not mean barely profitable. $240,000 a year is not chump change. It will dramatically increase the numbers of classes that we can provide and humanities events that we can provide. And it will do it in a profitable way. The biggest number that you saw on that slide, which was for the space, I mean, right now, we have this kind of weird sharing where Arvada Events controls the revenue for most of the events in the center that are not directly related to the arts theater. Arvada Center has some control over some of its events. By taking 100% of control over that, the Arvada Center generates those revenues. And that number is, again, it's for a category that is not the primary part of the mission statement. But in the effort of keeping us competitive, of looking at other sites like in Parker and Lone Tree, Butterfly, Children's Museum, as to what they do in trying to be competitive, remember that one of the goals, one of the key goals that the council directed the nonprofit to pursue, and that was the foundation for separating from the city in the first place, was stabilize the city's financial investment. We don't want it to keep going up every year. So we need to look at all four of those categories. And again, if all we were looking at was mission to provide the best education in humanities, we could eliminate any kind of events at the center. But that would significantly impact how much money we think we can raise from the philanthropic community. It would limit the kind of events that we can do to expose more people to the center who may in turn come in and sign up for classes subsequent to that. So it all has to work together. And while, when you looked at those four categories on that slide, one was bigger than the other, they were all in approximately the same range, in my opinion. And they all do bring in significant additional net revenue to the center each year. So I think we have to look at sort of the main mission is the most important thing. But we're trying to do that in a way that meets the commitment that the nonprofit made to the Arvada City Council, which is get to a point where we can stabilize the city's financial commitment to the Arvada Center every year.
Thank you.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Well, I don't know if I have any questions after that because I had probably the same thought, just reaction that Mr. Jones did was around the facility rental. But just maybe, maybe just a thought, maybe I just want to make sure how we got where we are today. I did recall, I thought we were going to try to do as much space for education and arts. But you're right, we have to have some place for, to be competitive with the other facilities, some meeting space. So I get that. Was there any thought of a restaurant or anything at one point in there, I thought? To kind of encourage people to come early to the facility, eat dinner, then enjoy a show, or it wasn't flexible?
It's certainly been a conversation over a long period of time. The unfortunate truth is that captive restaurants in cultural organizations have a really tough time making a go of it. And particularly in terms of the general limitation on operating hours. Unless you have something that can really go breakfast, lunch, dinner, and everything else all day long, you will have a hard time. The single thing I'll add to what Mr. Feldman said is that for organizations, especially like the Arvada Center, the education programming is the investment in the future. That's the building of an audience of not just spectators or ticket purchasers, but participants in lifelong learning and experience of the arts and humanities that will bring them back for generations.
Okay, and then, the only question I had, and I don't know if I caught it, was when you were showing the layout, you mentioned production areas. Is that where they're creating the actual backdrop and whatever, the props?
So currently, if you look at the original drawings of the center, the space that you see labeled as rehearsal space has been almost entirely taken over now by scenery, construction, and fabrication. There are still very limited areas for costume production and assembly, for wardrobe, for maintenance of those things, for storage of production supplies. So that's what we're talking about doing in areas. production supplies. So that's what we're talking about doing in areas like the current kitchen.
Okay, and I had one more question. For life me, I can't remember what it was, but I might come back.
Okay.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'm wondering with the construction costs that have been outlined here, you haven't been explicit at this point in what, how much of that would come from your fundraising and what you would be looking to the city for?
That's correct. That was not part of the request made to us. One of the conversations that we've had with Philip and with Clark would be that if the opportunity to pursue this direction was provided, then the center would be able to engage in a planning process and a feasibility study for the raising of private dollars.
Okay, so what you anticipate is that it would come through your fundraising?
Certainly, we anticipate that fundraising would have a significant piece of it. One of the things that this does is to create a number of large opportunities for donor recognition in terms of naming spaces.
And I brought a copy of the, I think it's just a draft copy of the agreement that we had entered into a few years ago, and I didn't find quickly the language that indicated that at some point we would be making a commitment, a date certain, that space would be turned over. And I think we said something at the earliest feasible time or something. Is that right? Could you remind us of the language that we had?
I don't know that specifically. I do know that part of the reason for this study was to enable that process to move forward.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly the section. I think it's section 14 of the cooperative agreement. It's either eight or 14, but it doesn't, I don't remember the exact language of it, but yes, that was the, I believe that was the expressed intent of the language. There is a phrase in the cooperative agreement that specifically says that it will include relocation to another community venue for Arvada events. It doesn't say may include, it says will include relocation.
Well, can we ask our legal counsel? What's it say? Do we have it?
Just a moment, Your Honor. We've got it pulled up over here, and we can look at it really quick.
Let's look at it, as to what it does say. And while you're doing that, do you have it?
We got it.
Great. Yeah, while we're waiting, Mr. Pfeiffer.
I have a question for Gordon. So that kitchen is really big over there currently, right? But does it support other operations within the city, the events?
It does. So it's a commercial kitchen, which is different than a catering kitchen, and what is made in the kitchen at the Arvada Center includes all the events at the Arvada Center as well as the banquet events at the two golf courses.
Okay. And does anything for, do we do anything at Stinger or anything from there? Do we run that concession stand or anything?
We do.
But it doesn't come out of that kitchen?
It doesn't.
Okay.
Great. Well, I've got a comment before we get to the legal issue. I find it a little amusing and a little frustrating to me that all these diagrams, I know you're not doing any work on the existing black box area, but the fact that it's left out kind of bothers me, because a lot of money was spent by the city to construct the existing black box and that whole expansion, and we're ignoring it as if it doesn't exist. It doesn't show up on these plans at all.
Mr. Mayor, I will take full responsibility for that. That is purely a formatting issue to be able to make the rest of the plans as large as possible to be able to see them clearly.
Because psychologically, to me, it's like, we want to ignore the expense that the city went through to build that and just say, this is all we've got when you've got much more.
Right, right. I would certainly say that because of the black box, the proximity of the projected donor cultivation area and all of that sort of thing has been incorporated into the thinking of this planning.
Okay. Do we have it?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, let me take the first shot at answering this, and if we need to get into some legal interpretation language, that Rachel can provide that. But what you'll recall is that we had the responsibility of completing a hospitality master plan by the end of 2015, and then presenting recommendations in the first quarter of 2016 to the city council and the nonprofit board. We were a little late in getting that done, but we did actually complete that and provide you with recommendations. I think that was actually part of a joint Arvada City Council, Arvada Events, I'm sorry, Arvada Center for Arts and Humanities Board meeting that occurred in sometime in late 2016, if I remember correctly. The bottom line is, is that we did not commit to a specific plan to relocate Arvada events. What we did show is what would be necessary. That was basically the RevPAR study that has been presented and I think discussed with the city council multiple times. And the issue of, you know, the issue of a date certain has been, I think, the thing that has been part of the discussion between the city council and the Arvada Center Arts and Humanities Board. The discussion in section 14 is that Arvada Events would continue to operate at the Arvada Center until such time the city council makes a decision about permanently relocating Arvada Events.
That's right. As part of that negotiating team, I remember it well.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to close the circle, here's the exact language that follows that part of section 14B that Mr. Devon just mentioned. The parties acknowledge that the long-term mission of the Arvada Center must be focused on the arts and humanities. In recognition of this focus, the city will complete a hospitality master plan, we heard about those dates, which will define the community's projected needs for hospitality services and define the next steps necessary to implement recommendations, which will include relocation to another community venue. The actions will be discussed by council and reviewed in 2016. So my recollection is, we kind of kicked the can down the road. We did not agree that there would be a date certain. We agreed that this study had to take place first. But that there was mutual agreement, and frankly, the study that recommended the separation also acknowledged that it could not be successful unless, at some point, the nonprofit was given 100% of the space in the building. So I agree with you that there was no date certain. My very strong recollection is that there was mutual agreement on the point that at some date, this separation will be made and the nonprofit will be given 100% of the space of the building.
Okay, thank you. Next part.
The projections I had made for you and discussed were the conclusion of my portion of the presentation, so I'll let Mr. Feldman come back.
All right. So we've already gotten into some of the issues that I was going to cover in my last couple of slides. And, Mr. Mayor, the reason I was making confused, giving confused looks when you talked about the black box, in addition to Chris's explanation, we're not proposing any changes of that part of the facility.
I know there's no changes to it, but it's like, we're sort of ignoring that financial commitment, which was a very big number that the city's already put into this.
No, please, 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 trust me.
And I accept his explanation.
And frankly, we are very pleased that this whole idea about doing repertory theater there a couple of years ago, many of us speculated whether that was going to be going out on a limb with the kind of programming that Councilmember Jones was concerned about, and is this going to fall flat? And we are increasing revenue every year with the black box, so it will continue to be a critically important part and growing part of both our programming and our net revenues. All right, so...
Before Mr. Pfeiffer's got a comment.
Can we stay on that subject real quick?
Sure.
So is the black box used quite a bit?
Define quite a bit.
Well, is it always running? Is it always showing something? Because I mean, I've only been there for a city event once in my eight years on city council, so I just...
In the last few years, we have grown programming from 12 weeks a year to 19 or 20 weeks a year in there. And that doesn't include the, that's just the professional company, and that doesn't include the performance camps that happen in the summer. There's...
Okay, so there's classes and stuff like that.
Five or six. Well, yeah, and they end with a performance, but they use the black box for rehearsals in class as well as their performances at the end. So if you add together the summer session, it's probably in operation 30 to 35 weeks a year. And one of the advantages of adding production space is that we, it actually, as was mentioned, alluded to earlier, it actually frees up both of the stages so that we can have more nights of more ticketed events, because we'll be spending fewer nights rehearsing and building sets in the space.
Yeah, well, and the only reason I asked, I was trying to look right here. I went on your website, and it shows, you have two performances happening at the exact same time on the exact same days, The Moores and Frank, at the same time. So I was a little confused on what was saying on the website versus how we're utilizing it.
I don't think they're...
It might be an error on the website, then.
Or it could be a matinee of one and an evening performance of the other.
Like here, I'm looking at, give you an example. I'm looking at your black box for Diary of Anne Frank's, you know, February 1st through May 17th, 2019, 1:00 p.m. on Wednesdays, Thursday through Saturday, 7:30, 2:00 o'clock on Sundays. And then when I go over to look at The Moores that's playing, it's giving slightly different days but exact same time.
Since it's three plays in repertory, there is a calendar grid that shows what plays on what night, but...
So it does rotate?
Yeah, we simply gave the inclusive dates of the first opening to the last closing. But within those dates from late January through mid-May, all three plays are alternating nights.
Okay, so you can move the sets for different nights right away, real quick in there, and it's done and good?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm trying to understand the utilization of the space, since the mayor brought it up.
Yeah, absolutely.
I thought we should be using that space, or you should be using that space as much as you can.
And we are using it more, but I think this plan allows us to use both stages even more than we do now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Well, to your statement, Mr. Pfeiffer, I just wanted to say one thing. Actually, today is a perfect example of utilization of the space. As I wore my board hat this morning, the center had a fantastic program that was brought in from Minnesota. It was, and it was supported by a number of organizations, one of them being U.S. Bank, and also a program in Denver called Reach. It had to do with diversity and the value of diversity. And as I think back at this wonderful event that was very well-received, I can think of two areas where it would have been really nice to have a greater amount of space to utilize, because the black box reception area was very well utilized. It was very full, very crowded. It was a beautiful event. And the other thing that I just wanted to say, there are two events that happened, well, this event happened today in the History Museum, where everyone attending was seated around tables. And unfortunately, because of that, because of the nature of that space, it has a very, excuse me, high ceiling. The acoustics are very difficult. And Mayor, I know you've attended the donor brunch that's given in December, and again, it's a very important event where the Arvada Center honors its donors, and that's a very important event for donor cultivation. And again, you know, because of the space, it's very crowded, and with that particular room, the acoustics, very, very difficult to hear. So it minimizes what can be done with donors and different events. So...
Okay, Mr. Feldman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's your closing arguments. No.
Yes, I didn't know this was going to be a competitive advocacy.
No, it's not.
I should have started by thanking you all for having us here and continuing this very important discussion. And I guess I didn't need to read that part of the cooperative agreement, because here it is on my first slide. But being able to use the entire building for carrying out our mission and making it thrive has been a mutual goal, and I want to emphasize that word, mutual, of the Arvada Center nonprofit and the city council and those who were involved in the studies that led up to the formation of the nonprofit even years before that. And let me just say personally, I love Arvada Events. It's been a big part of my family's life. It was a big part of my life as a city official, and I have always been a strong advocate for it. And at the same time, we know, based upon the cooperative agreement and all the work that went into it, that at some point, a final decision has to be made. To the Councilmember McGough's point about raising this money, we can't start planning a capital campaign until we have a date. And I've got my preferences of when that should be, but frankly, whether it was one year, or three years, or 10 years from now, you can't go out to foundations and other funding sources and say, please give me money to help in this reconstruction and improvements to the Arvada Center until we know when that space is going to be available. So we did this study in large part because our board thought it was important, but in large part because two November meetings ago that we had with the Arvada City Council, you asked us to do it and said, before we're in a position of making a decision on a date, we want to see some more detail on what you might be able to do with that space, and how much revenue are you going to be able to generate from it. And we tried to do that, as Chris said, in a way that could be phased, and also in a way that the dollars were very, very conservative. I've got the same experience that all of you have in doing our city budgeting, and we all try to be very conservative in what we estimate for our revenues and overestimate for our expenditures, and that's why we've been so successful in how we come out at the end of the year. And I think Mr. Devon and Mr. Archer would agree that the almost three years of nonprofit operation have been a very, very nice success as we've moved towards stabilizing our financial operations. Did I accurately portray that? Thank you. So we know a final decision needs to be made at some point. We are bursting at the seams. We're not keeping up with our competition. The use of this space is really critical to meet the goals of the nonprofit and the goals of the city council if we're going to stabilize City of Arvada contributions. Even if we had control of that ballroom space now with no major construction and allowed it to continue to be used for seated events of 600-plus people, while it is not our preferred option, even if we just had that, we would be able to make educational use of that space. As, again, back to Councilmember Jones's question, that's the low-hanging fruit, because we know that there is a demand for that that we're not able to meet right now. Wouldn't be the ideal classroom space, but we are confident that we can generate net revenue of at least $75,000 to $100,000 just by getting the space back for that. Again, the cooperative agreement anticipated, without a specific date, the importance of having one entity have control over 100% of what is programmed at the building. And we had a five-year plan. Mayor will remember that in the negotiations, there was a discussion over, the city wanted to protect itself by having a termination without clause, cause, clause in the contract, and rightfully so, in case this didn't work out. But the founding board members felt strongly that if we're going to, we're not going to be able to get to a closer goal of financial stability unless we have at least five years that we know the council can only pull the plug for cause. And we agreed on that, and we are now almost at the end of year three of nonprofit management, and we have made significant strides. But we are never going to get to where we need to be to meet those mutual goals of the council and the Arvada Center without 100% control over that space. And the purpose, in my mind, of tonight's meeting was to present this study, which we both agreed was important to do, to see what some of the possibilities are to you tonight, to answer any questions that you may have. I hope in the very near future, you will have further deliberation, perhaps another executive session similar to the one that we had, that you had last year, discussing is council-ready at this point to... that you had last year, discussing is council ready at this point to make a commitment, to make a modification to this agreement, to include a date certain so that the center can begin planning the next steps. And we hope that, based on the information that you've received tonight, you see that we are doing our due diligence as a board and as a staff at the Arvada Center to determine how we get there from here, both to complete the mission successfully and the foundational agreement we made with the city to stabilize the city's financial contribution to the center going forward. And we hope that in the coming weeks and perhaps month or two, we can have a further discussion with you about the specifics of that. I don't expect to have that discussion tonight, but we can talk about how we get there from here. So this, to me, has been an important step to complete this study and present this information. If you have additional questions, we're happy to take them. And we look forward to continuing to move forward with you.
Kate, who's going first? Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have just a couple of questions for a variety of people in the room. But Mr. Feldman, I'll start with you. You know, one of the things about separating the Arvada Center to a nonprofit was to assist with the Arvada Center's ability to fundraise. Do you have any idea kind of how that's going so far? How are we doing, whether it's year-to-date or last year versus previous years? How's the fundraising trajectory going?
I may ask Philip to, if he has ideas on specific numbers, but I'll tell you this, it's going great. And we have a lot of, a lot of work we can do. I think at the time we created the nonprofit, Arvadas, the percentage of our budget that was philanthropic giving was like three or four percent. Is that right? We have increased that by double digits every year that we have been in operation. If you look at, and our staff has put together some information which we can share with you, the percentages of revenue of nonprofit arts organizations of, in the ten million dollar a year range, they range from anywhere from twenty to fifty-five percent, right? So we started at three.
Three.
We have increased that from, I think the number was a few hundred thousand?
Around two fifty a year. And this year, we're going to end about seven to seven fifty.
Okay, so we've more than tripled it in less than three years.
Three percent to seven or eight percent.
Right. So when I say we got a long way to go, we have a long way to go, this kind of improvement will help in large part because of the naming right opportunities. There's a lot of other things we can do that we're talking about. I've talked to the mayor a little bit, and the comment was made about the donor lounge. I was there for traveling a few weeks ago, and there were ten people in the donor lounge, and it was elbow to elbow. There's a lot of opportunities for things we can do to increase that. And we are, we have eighteen people on our board now, and many of us are out there cultivating donors, including one of your colleagues on council. We are out, everybody, we've got all these new people with different kinds of resources and contacts. We had an event last month, I believe, for a number of the minority chambers of commerce. We had the Black Chamber of Commerce, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, LGBT Chamber, the Women's Chamber. And we had them all at the center for the art exhibit and a show. And it was all these people from the metro area, most of whom had never been to the center before. So we are, in many different ways, we're bigger and we're reaching out those tentacles and making these new contacts. So, yeah, when I say we're doing great by going up over double digits every year, that's higher than most nonprofits do, but the ceiling is way above where I can see right now, and we want to continue to grow that.
But part of it, it seems like, you know, when you, when you start so low, it's easy to grow at great rates for a while. And at some point, some point that runs out. The follow-up to that would be, do you guys, as a board, have, you know, here in the city, as you well know, we do ten-year modeling, kind of of our capital expenditures and different, different parts of the financial aspects of the city. Are you doing, is that part of what the Arvada Center is doing, the nonprofit is doing? And if so, is your fundraising kind of falling within the model, or how is that going? That's probably a question for Philip more so than for you, Mr. Feldman, but-
Yeah, I mean, we're doing a series of five-year budget models. We're not yet doing capital models because we're not, we're not there yet. There's no project. But, yeah, fundraising is definitely falling in line with that. And in many cases, it's succeeding. We've been projecting fifteen percent growth a year. We, in fundraising, we've been averaging, I think the range has been nineteen percent to thirty-four percent. We're not going to see that bigger growth this year in bottom line giving because we've been getting, for whatever reason, it'll be a smaller growth this year, but we've been getting a lot of restricted gifts, which, where donors have stepped forward to say, hey, I want to do something, I want to give money to do something that's not in your budget. What do you need? So if you included that, we would, we would be at double digits again this year. But because that doesn't go directly to the bottom line-
Right.
-it depends on the context.
Yeah, got it. Okay. This question for, for probably Gordon or someone on the city staff. Do you have any idea what the current Arvada Events revenue at the Arvada Center is? Or just annually, or just roughly in a year? What is, what does Arvada Events do just at the Arvada Center?
So in 2018, for the figures that were presented to you in early April, total revenues were one point eight five nine million dollars.
And so it was one point eight, that was the gross revenue over the year in 2018?
Correct.
Okay. And, and do you have any idea roughly, based on Arvada Events' performance, what that yields in a net revenue?
It produced a net revenue of two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
Two forty-four, okay. And so the, what this study's showing is, part of what the Arvada Center would do would be to keep some of that meeting space, reduce it in size, but keep some of it. And you're forecasting, it looks like from, from your forecast here, a little less than half as much gross revenue. So you're, you're figuring you're going to keep about half of the events that happen there? Is that, is that how you looked at, or how did you, how did you come up with what you might do?
I, I think that's accurate. Those, as, as we indicated, we compared to some other facilities across the front range where the events space is specifically tied to a cultural user. So it's not just a kind of, hey, whoever, you know, would like to book some space, we have some space. It's also about saying, we have events that we want to host in conjunction with programming at the center. So it's a mix of those two things. But, but certainly, yes, we were, we were anticipating-
Right.
-that it would be approximately that amount.
And, and does that mean that the anticipation of that meeting space at the Arvada Center would no longer be available to rent to anybody who wanted it, but it would be more kind of restricted to only within those who are, fall within that mission of the Arvada Center? Is that, is that your way of looking at it?
I don't think it's fair to say that it would be exclusive, but just by virtue of the fact that some, a considerable amount of the square footage gets converted to-
Sure.
-functional space for the education and production departments, then you've really just got the spaces, the space currently occupied by Bulvermay, all of B and half of C available. And so there's inherently less calendar flexibility to offer that space to community users because there's going to be more use of it driven by the center and its programs.
Okay. Yeah, if I could just add to that briefly, there's certainly time of day flexibility. So a number of us are regularly showing up the Arvada Center at the crack of dawn for service club meetings. I can't imagine we'd be programming classes at that time. So there would still be an opportunity for community groups to have access to that space when it did not have other uses or other options available.
Right. That's, brings up, this is kind of just a side note, but, you know, I think last week, I was at the Arvada Center, maybe three times. All three of them were to go, to attend an event, whether it's a service club event or the absolutely incredible State of the City speech that I heard. So some of the other events that, that we see there, and I guess my, the concern I have a little bit for the Arvada Center, and I think you guys on the board feel differently, and so this may be just me, and this is just a comment, you don't need to respond to this, is that, that for a number of people, and I may be very much one of them, the, my, my route to the Arvada Center is kind of through the events door. That, that's what gets me into the Arvada Center more often. And that, that without that door being open, or being open as frequently, that, that I may be at the Arvada Center less. And I wonder if that, does your study, and this maybe gets to my question, does your study have any kind of a look at the, at the ramifications of that? You know, is there, is there anything where you feel like the attendance at paid ticketed events may suffer because of just the, the people who no longer are walking through the door for another purpose, but at least they're walking through the door?
Currently, a number of people who walk through the door for other events, we don't get the SCFD-
Sure.
...credit for that. And there are some, as you described, like yourself, who primarily come to the Arvada Center because of Arvada Events. Council can certainly choose, it's your, you own the building. Council can certainly choose to say, we intend to keep a dual mission at that building, part for the Arts and Humanities and part for that segment of our community that uses it the way you described. That would be a sea change in the cooperative agreement. And it would impact whether an Arts and Humanities nonprofit could ever stabilize the city's contribution if we wanted to keep the Arts and Humanities programming at the level that we have it now. So there, you could make that decision, and there would be ramifications. I think that we looked at it in the context of, you know, the people that we're losing who only come here because of Arvada Events are not really generating any revenue for the center. There are some people who come primarily because of Arvada Events, get exposed to the center, and then may come back to a play or sign their kids up for a summer camp. We don't think that's a huge number. For as long as I served behind that dais and I began, became the council representative to the Arts Council back in nineteen ninety-three, we have talked between the city and the Arvada Center, it had a better cross-market, even before we had Arvada Events. And we just informally had city events at the center. And it's never able to have been done very successfully. We, we believe very strongly that the results of this study show that the opportunities that the Arvada Center development staff and the board has to generate more patrons to the Arvada Center through the use of the space will far exceed what we may lose if Arvada Events relocates.
Okay. No, that's a fair answer to that question. That, that's kind of my, my, I don't know the answer to, but, but is, is there some damage done to the center by, by people not going? So I think that's a, that's a fair, fair question. So let me make just in two, two comments here. It's, it's, one is, we, it's kind of almost a chicken and the egg issue here, a little bit about this date certain and how do we, how do we do this? On one hand, we can't fundraise for something you don't know about. But on the other hand, you can't do it if you can't fund, raise the money to do it. So it becomes kind of a, a chicken and the egg kind of thing about, you know, if, if we were to, the city were to turn that space over without kind of the ability for it to be highly utilized, it seems like that that's not the best decision. But yet, if we were to not give you, give a date in which we would turn it over, we prevent you from having the ability to, to create the money to fully utilize it. And so I just wonder if there's not some pathway in between that's like a, oh, kind of a, a pathway of milestones, like, you know, things stay the same until we've accomplished this, and then that generates this, and kind of a path to get, a path to get to what the cooperative agreement kind of spoke about, but without it being just a, one side saying, well, sure, raise the money to do all this, and then we'll let you have it, which you probably can't do, or the other side saying, well, sure, just give us all the space, and someday we'll do it. Is there something that's kind of a, something between those goalposts that can accomplish, accomplish that over time?
I think the item on one of the slides where I mentioned that even without raising the money to do major changes, there's a small by comparison, but still somewhat significant increase in net revenue that we can make every year that would still require the nonprofit to control the space, but just to keep the use for the larger events available. I would suggest to the City Council that, were it not for the commitment, when the decision was made to create a nonprofit and the goals were set out to get to a point where you're going to stabilize the city's contribution, were it not for the commitment to make one hundred percent of the space available to the center to complete that mission, we would not have been able to generate the interest in board members serving on this board the way we have with a fairly diverse, and I mean that term in the broadest possible way, group of people, diverse interests, diverse economic areas, diverse parts of the metro area they come from, the first jobs. We will not, in my opinion, be able to keep a board if we are not able to continue down this path. And I believe, again, this is just my belief, if, if we go too far down the road of saying, if this goal is reached, then we'll give this much more, and that extends over some long period of time, I do not believe we will be able to keep a number of people who are currently serving on this board. And I believe it will be very, very difficult to generate interest from new board members without knowing that they have the opportunity to work for a nonprofit that is going to have the flexibility to be as successful as it can in this space. And, and I know that the city really doesn't want to be in a position to say, do we want to take this back? Do we want to continue with an Arts and Humanities programs that kind of goes down to a lower level of quality? There are a lot of other potential ramifications. So I appreciate the opportunity that you're looking for some middle ground. And I just want to be really frank with you that you have a lot of board members serving on that board right now, myself included, who have made the commitment to give significantly of our volunteer time and our financial resources based upon the commitment that we thought we were signing up for, which was a council decision to make one hundred percent of that space available at some point in the future without having to jump over this hurdle, and then jump over that hurdle, and then jump over that hurdle. So, like I said a little while ago, council can certainly change that requirement if this council wants to. You're not bound by what prior councils did. But I think you're going to have a hard time keeping the board that you have and attracting a quality of the kind of board that you have if, if we don't get to something definitive.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Thank you. Just have a couple of questions. I mean, you, we all know that, I wasn't on council at the time, but we all know the agreement and that it, you know, we've been doing this for three years. We've been talking about this for three years. Conversations about a date certain have been happening for three years. And although you don't have a date certain, you know and anticipate it coming. So you must know or have a plan for raising nine point five million dollars. Although you can't go out and start it, you must have a plan for that. And, and do you know what that plan is and how long it would take you to raise it? And what happens if you don't?
So, well, let me just say that we have, and Philip may want to add something, there are ways to do a capital campaign. And every expert we have spoken to said, you do not dare begin to put a plan together unless you know what and when you're going to be able to use that money for. You will not generate, we are doomed to failure from every expert we have spoken to about how to raise money- to about how to raise money for nonprofits if we don't know, if we can't tell people, "This is what we're going to do with the space and this is when we're going to be able to start it." So, no, I, I don't have a great plan for what we're going to do until we know when we're going to get the space. And I've got board members who are not willing to devote the time to put that kind of a plan together. We, we'd have to go out and hire a consultant and like I said, we've already talked to them and they said, "Don't do it unless you know when you're going to be able to do something with that money." So I, I guess I respectfully disagree if, if your premise is you think we ought to be able to do that. We've been told it will fail miserably.
So if we did decide a date certain, let's say it was a year or two years from now, in two years, or let's say we decided today that it was going to be two years from now and you made a plan and you found out that that plan in this area with this building was going to take you five years to raise that money, then what?
So we, if we had a date certain, we would retain a consultant and put a capital campaign together. And that consultant presumably would advise us, "Here's what your, here's what reasonable goals you should have here and here's a plan for how to achieve it." And if that plan said, "You're not going to get to that nine and a half million number that Chris mentioned plus whatever inflation is unless you have five, it takes five or six years." I mean, most capital campaigns are usually about three-year campaigns, so I think it's more likely they would say, "Here's what you can do. Here's what a successful capital campaign will raise for you in three years." We would have to look at it and say, "Does that get us where we need to be to do this?" As Chris pointed out in his part of the presentation, we can phase this in and we can talk about what's the, based on the money that we are confident we can raise, what do we do first? Do we need two phases? Do we need one phase? There are lots of other things that we might be able to do with the center that we didn't even talk about here, that in my mind are sort of the next capital campaign, like putting rows of seats on that gently sloping lawn at the outdoor theater.
Allegedly.
Allegedly.
Sloping lawn. Gently sloping.
So, I mean, this is just sort of the first things that we saw about how we can maximize the mutual goals of financial stability and, and meeting our mission. But we may find out in a capital campaign that you can't do it as quickly as you thought and then we'll have to prioritize what we do first. We're, we're pretty confident we're going to be able to do a significant part of it.
So in the three years, three years, because I'm confident if they said three years, you would be able to raise the funds in three years. So three years, you've raised the funds, all the while pulling from your existing donors and the $750,000 in donations that you currently receive, that's going towards your capital campaign now, maybe, maybe not. We, we, we may assume some would and maybe not, but you also have expenses that are occurring. And I just, I guess to me, I would like to see the business plan. For me, it's about the numbers, you know? The heart and soul of that center is about making sure it doesn't fail and making sure that, you know, it's sustaining the expenses and, and making sure that three years from now, a conversation isn't back here saying, "We didn't make it and we need $2 million."
I understand your concern and, and I think you raise valid points. What I struggle with, both as an individual board member and as a representative of the board, is that, as I mentioned earlier, prior councils made a different commitment to this board. And we have a bunch of board members who have agreed to serve based upon that commitment and, and council pretty much told us, "We don't want to be involved in the management of the Arvada Center." The, the assumption of the Kellogg Study was, no matter what a successful nonprofit did, it will be able to generate more money from the use of that space and expand its mission and help meet that goal of financial stability for the city or stabilizing the city's financial investment. So while I, I see no reason not to continue to have the conversation and continue to share information and continue to seek city feedback on what you think about the business plan as it gets developed and the capital campaign as it gets developed by you, I mean, the entire council and the staff, I think making it a condition of getting the space is ultimately going to be a huge setback for the board in, in being able to move forward. Just my personal opinion.
Can I switch, switch directions with, with, I had a quick, quick question of something that was said earlier and you were talking about the number of new people that would come into the facility at 100% capacity. And I was just wondering, maybe Mr. Sneed, you can help answer this question, is as your competitors grow along beside you, will we maintain that third place, do you think? Or are you going, we going to bump up knowing that as, as we grow in Arvada, they will also grow?
Well, you know, I, I can't speak to what they're going to do in the future, but we're certainly not going to be able to keep up with them if we can't grow.
Right.
So I, I think, I, either way, we must grow or we lose a share. So and you could say in the future, "Well, you're going to grow, but they're going to grow at the same rate." Well, at least we won't slide backwards. And I just want to add some, just some technical facts. The Development Staff has put together the process of creating a capital campaign. Again, we're not going to spend any resources until we know we have a date certain. Their estimate is two to five years, so that falls within the, the range of what you're saying. And to address your other concern, because that's a concern everybody has, which is, do you siphon off money from operating, from donations that go to operating for capital? But capital, experienced capital campaign consultants and staffs know that there, there are specific strategies to make sure that doesn't happen. So that when we appeal to donors, we make it very clear to them that we are asking for a gift in addition to their normal gifts. And I think most donors understand that it doesn't help us if they give us $10,000 for a capital campaign and subtract $10,000 from their normal donation. I think, I think that's a pretty easy message to send. I also just want to mention that the Children's Museum's recent capital campaign, which was successful, was for 16 million. So, you know, you can say, "Well, if they can do 16, can we do 10?" And we can certainly, we're certainly going to look at that, but we certainly serve a lot of children as well as they do. So there's certainly precedence in the area for a smaller budget organization. Remember, their, their budget's about, I think it's now about $7 million and they were able to raise 16. So with our, with our budget getting close to 12 million, you know, I think we have at least the capacity that they have.
Thank you so much. I just have a couple more questions that had to do with numbers and business plans. I'm kind of afraid to ask them now. So I'm just going to yield my time.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Couple of other additional questions and more clarifying. So the, the, based on, well, let me go, let me start here. And maybe this is what you were just addressing, Mr. Sneed, was in the staff report, it talks about the revenue expense pro forma, that while it's not complete, the board determined that you weren't going to spend any more time or energy specific to the, the room rental income. Am I, is that what that was referencing or?
So that really is, is part and parcel of, of the projection of events and rental revenue, specifically the, for the third line of the top box there.
So, so there wasn't a lot of thought put into that number?
No, there was, there was considerable thought. I mean, if we were to, if we were to talk about mapping out and assumed calendar and those kinds of things, then, then that's an additional step of work. We feel, we feel that all of these numbers are very conservative.
Okay. Okay. I was just confused by
Sure.
the comment in the staff report. So then with, and going back to the SCFD funding, obviously this is an important part and an important element of the center. And I'm scrolling to the slide here. Actually, it's right there. The, the net, the, the attendance, the 52,000, is that net new or is that just the increase to?
So that's the, that's the increased, so there's, there's a formula the SCFD has and there's a formula that the Arvada Center uses. And so this is based on the Arvada Center's formula to project SCFD revenue in the two categories of attendance specifically and in terms of overall organizational revenue. So that does relate to an anticipated increase in ticketed and qualifying attendance at the Arvada Center reflected in all of those programs.
And so ticketed and qual, so qualifying would be the ceramics class?
Absolutely.
So any, any, anybody who registers for any kind of class or seminar, the author thing
Yep.
you talked about, if they're, if they're buying a ticket to get in outside of a chamber event to the, I think to what Ken was talking about.
Yes.
Those are the qualifying events.
In, in fact, when, when a student comes to an arts day program that is multiple events within that day, they count multiple times because they are having discreet, multiple arts exposure events.
So when the school comes and they, the students are moving from place to place, that's what you're saying, is that checking the box for two or three different
Correct.
events.
Correct.
That would qualify under the SCFD?
Yes.
So how many schools can participate? Or I should, maybe the better question is, how many students can participate in a given day?
Sure.
So currently, when we're running children's theater on the main stage with 525 seats per performance, that's potentially over 1,000 students that can see the children's theater production. We currently have room for arts day to accommodate only about 225 of those 1,000 students in arts day experiences. So we are potentially losing 800 students every one of those days because we don't have room to accommodate them.
So they're coming to see the performance and then they can't necessarily take advantage of all of the other arts things that could happen while they're there?
That's right. So we are, we are currently only able to capture about 20% of that audience for arts day experiences and we have to turn the others away.
Okay. So, okay, that makes, and I appreciate that because I didn't understand that.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good clarification. And then, so the current, Philip, maybe there's a better question for you. So the, are the current attendance for the Arvada Center annually, what does that look like?
In terms of SCFD qualifying attendance?
Yeah.
It's about 250,000. And again, that's not, if someone buys a subscription to seven productions, they count seven times, right? So it's, it's discreet experiences. So it's about 250,000. We're not able to track all the free attendance at galleries and things like that. And I should just clarify that as of the SCFD reauthorization, we are now able to count our free attendance if we can document it to the satisfaction of auditors. So for example, the complimentary tickets that we give out for various purposes are donor cultivation or, you know, staff complimentary tickets or whatever, we can track those and we're going to be able to get SCFD credit for that. But we've not found a way, for example, to track all the visitors to the, to the galleries to count. But even so, SCFD was, and I was on that working group, we were all very conservative, only 2%. It used to be 50% of SCFD funding was revenue, 50% was paid attendance. It's now 48% paid attendance, 2% documented free attendance. So we're still basically living off of the paid attendance.
Okay. And so again, just going, just again for clarification, so the, the 52,000 number here is in addition to the 250,000 annually?
Yep.
So that it's taking, okay, thank you.
And I think it's, that, that aligns with the overall revenue numbers. What you're seeing is about a 20 to 25% growth in revenue and attendance for the Arvada Center with 100% use of the space.
Okay. And then again, and I don't know if this is, who can answer this question? So on the calculation for revenue, is that based on gross or direct net revenue for SCFD?
Sorry, say that again?
So if I'm looking at the, the 217,000, actually, let me go back up, the 93,000 of SCFD revenue calculated contribution, is that based on the net revenue or the direct revenue?
No, no, SCFD
I'm sorry, that's the same. The gross or the net?
I, I see what you're asking now. SCFD funding that's based upon revenue is based upon gross revenue.
Okay. So they don't care what you spend to, they just?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. It's based on gross revenue.
Okay. And I think some of my other questions have already been answered. I think I'm good, thank you.
Good. Thank you. Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for a really informative presentation and thank fellow council members for all the questions that they have raised to illuminate all of us through the answers from those presenters. I just have a couple of comments rather than a, a question. At this point, I mean, I'm, I'm really influenced by the mission statement itself. The Arvada Center celebrates and elevates the human condition with engaging arts, humanities, education and entertainment that expand the cultural landscape for everyone who visits us. I think it's a worthy goal to extend that mission to as many people as, as possible. To that end, I would be much in favor of establishing a date certain, even if at this point it is a, a date certain that is put out before the staff, the Arvada Center Board and the council, so that we might work toward that and see what those impacts would be. But I think we need to move forward with this. In your presentations, you talked about various risks, but you didn't separate those out to say, "These are the risks." But if I go back to those slides, I take a look at, and you've mentioned them more than once, one of them has to do with the, the SCFD funding, the risk of that being reduced, of being a smaller share of the, of the pie. There's also a risk, as you mentioned here, first of all, with the statement, "The center must continue to refresh, rebrand and maintain strong and growing programs." And of course, the Arvada Center is nearly 45 years old now. It's been rebranded, we've done a lot of new and different things over the years, but that needs to continue. And your statement there, "There's real risk to becoming financially and operationally stagnant." And I think that's absolutely the case. A third risk you mentioned that the, as long as we stay at a somewhat break-even point, the city still remains at risk to face additional funding support beyond the annual appropriation. And of course, one of the things that propelled us into this agreement was that ask at the end of each year for additional funding. So there is that risk. A fourth risk that you didn't include in the written statement, but that Mr. Philman mentioned and emphasized, I think is a, a true risk also, and that is the risk of board defections, board member defections. And I think we do owe it to the board that we collectively brought into existence and through some of our recommendations and of course through the leadership of Ken Philman and others to create a very effective board. And I think it's a very real risk that that board may not maintain its enthusiasm or even its membership. I think it's, those are true risks. So I would definitely advocate that we move ahead, set a date, see what the impacts of that might be, and let's talk about a date that we can at least focus upon and then finally get the, get a date approved. I don't think it does us any good to kind of kick the can down the road further to say, "Sometime we'll get that done." Let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ford?
Thank you, Mr. McGough. I would completely agree with what you just said. I would like to ask a few clarifying questions, if I may. In the box for the total net revenue from use of entire building, in those numbers, were, were those numbers arrived at from solely the advantage of the programs in each of those categories, if you will? Or did it include the potential for greater donor participation? participation as well?
That was a factor that was, we tried to capture within the line specifically for contributed revenue. So-
Okay.
Through, through the increases in other programs and being able to attract donor interest in those programs, that would result in the contributed revenue gain.
Okay.
But that is, that is specifically operating revenue and not capital revenue.
Okay, thank you. And then Philip, I had a question for you. When the, when the Arvada Center was a part of the city, at that time, did the Arvada Center, was the Arvada Center able to do cross-marketing with the events? The events participants?
We have cross-marketed at various times. Gordon will have a longer, has a longer history with this than I do. My understanding is that in the past, they've not been terribly successful, they've not been terribly consistent either. Is that a fair statement, Gordon? And at, at, at one recent occasion, I think the city made the decision to renew the efforts with us to cross-market. And Gordon has been meeting with our Director of Communications, Marcus Turner, and they have a plan. Is that accurate? Yeah. So there have been attempts in the past, I don't think they've been terribly successful. We have tried, which is not to say we won't keep trying and try different strategies. But whatever the reason is, I think the kinds of, in, in general, with exceptions, the kinds of patrons that are attracted to, that come to the Arvada Center for events are not necessarily interested in the arts, or at least not the arts as we offer it. And, and I, and I do think the staffs, my predecessors have tried to capture some of that audience, it just hasn't been awfully successful.
And in the past, when the city and the Arvada Center were together, did the Arvada Center not capture greater SCFD funding because they were able to, you know, use the participation of the events, people in the events, excuse me?
I understand. Yes, there was some loss from that revenue, but it's been more than made up for by other sources of revenue as, as I think everybody expected. And we can, but we can recapture that if we have the control of the whole space and we are having events, we can recapture that.
And, and is it my, am I correct in my understanding that in most situations of arts and arts-related organizations, that all of them have some form of event space?
Yes, absolutely. And I think the task force, the ad hoc task force that was appointed by City Council in 1990, I mean, 2012, excuse me, recognized that as well, that that was part of the mix. And if you recall, and those of you who are around in the task force recommendations, they recognized that two key elements toward stabilizing and building the Arvada Center, including building its reserves, building an endowment, a meaningful endowment, were the, the enhanced ability to fundraise, and we have recognized that. But the other, the other key component is revenue from 100% use of the space, including events, as you mentioned. So that was, that was equal to fundraising, I think, enhanced fundraising in terms of stabilizing the Arvada Center. So we're halfway there, we've gotten one of, and fundraising will continue to increase, but so will expenses. So I think the model again was based upon enhanced fundraising and enhanced revenue from 100% use of the space.
And I, I would like to just make a comment. Again, I'm going to put my hat on as an Arvada Center Board Member because I have the advantage that my colleagues don't have in that I talk to a lot of people who go to the center. In fact, today, I mentioned, I, I had conversation with a few people and it, it really is a wonderful opportunity to talk to people and hear what people have to say about the Arvada Center and how they love the Arvada Center for a lot of reasons and we're very fortunate in Arvada to have the Arvada Center. And I go back to those who created the Arvada Center in 1976, who had that foresight because today even I've, I've had the honor of talking to, I had, I had a very interesting conversation recently with another City Council member from another city who, that city is actually thinking about starting an art center similar to the Arvada Center. And we have that competitive advantage right now. We have a tremendous, not only a wonderful building space, we have a fantastic grounds that we haven't even talked about tonight, that can be utilized in wonderful ways for the arts. And I think that, you know, to, 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 as Mr. McGough said, to continue to kick the can, I, in my opinion, would be a very drastic mistake.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeifer.
I have to refresh my memory, I don't, more than kind of, you know, I was part of that original committee with Bob Dyer, but remind me, the plan on, the city's contribution is capped, right, or for the most part, I'll just say it's stabilized, that's probably a better word. And then what was the plan for, or the idea of profitability, when would that hit? And, and was it the city's idea to reduce the stabilization over time? I mean, I think that's ideal state, right?
The original five-year model we presented showed us breaking even in year five. And we're close to breaking even this year in year three, it could still go-
But with the city's contribution still, right?
No, no, without, no, without the city's, without the city's supplemental contribution. In other words-
The December surprise.
Yeah, so I mean, that's the stabilize, right? You have a baseline dollar amount we pay, I don't know what it is, there's cash and there's in-kind.
Right.
And that's stable, that's stabilized, it doesn't do this or actually is doing this.
It doesn't accept for, we, we made the case that we can't instantly do without the backfill, that for a period of up to five years, we would need additional funding. And we did in fact in years one and two, and as I say here, in year three, we're, we're very close to breaking even this year, whereas the model projected that break even in year five.
Five. So your, your break even will hit sooner with the stabilization of the city funds. But what about your, let's just pretend year six, seven, eight, nine, 10, I would assume there's an exit strategy on the city's contribution to this or no, is that a forever thing? I'm looking to you two.
Yes, Councilmember Pfeifer. The city's contribution of both cash and then the in-kind in terms of utilities and facilities costs, that was, that was not intended to go down.
Okay.
That was intended to stay the same as it was in, basically in 2016 when we started this agreement.
Okay, for however long this agreement-
Right.
Or forever or whatever. Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure, I can remember that detail. All right, that works. And then, you know, this is, to me, is still the elephant in the room is, then what with the events, Arvada events, I'd like to staff more than you guys. The A-team, sorry, A-team. But Mr. Devon's not paying attention to me right now, so we'll sit here patiently while he talks.
I apologize.
I'm just kidding.
I'm sorry, was your question-
I know, you're probably getting factual information to help us out.
Yes.
The question is, is then what with the events? I mean, I get they're in a, we're, we're all in a dilemma right now, it's, I say it's a chicken and egg in a different way. We've got to help them be successful, but then we've got to make a decision on the events. I mean, is it something we keep? Does it somewhat merge into them on their catering side? Does it become a new thing? You know, I think that's the, that's the one thing that's lodging this whole, for me at least, is putting a lodge into this thing and you've got to pull it out and either ripcord it, right? Because they can't make that decision, we have to make that decision on events.
Yes.
So what's the plan?
What's the plan? Well, there's, there's a couple of things that we're working on. Number one, we are in, in discussions and have looked at the concept of, of a, of a, incorporating events in meeting space, conference space within a potential development for a hotel on the Trammell Crowe site, the site that is south of where, where, south of Vance, I'm sorry, south of, of West 56th Avenue on, on that particular site. We looked at our concept plan today that suggested that it could be, it could be fit into that site. There is a gap, we haven't done a full financial analysis, but there is a gap that would require us to come up with some level of funding in order to develop that, that event site. The other thing is within your, within the current draft, the current draft of the strategic plan, we have offered a potential date certain for, for council to consider. Now, you haven't acted on that, we have, we've had one review of the strategic, the draft strategic plan, this is the, the draft strategic plan for 2020 through 2025, so we haven't really discussed or vetted that with council yet, but we offered it as, as a, as a date certain, in, in case you wanted to name that date certain so that we would go forward with trying to develop an alternative. So that's, that's the best way I can answer your question right now.
So it's on us?
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Gordon, how many events do we have on an annual basis that exceeds the 275 seated dinner type, or lunch, or breakfast type of event?
I could give you an exact count later this week-
Okay.
But it's a, it's a smaller number. We have hosted 410 events last year and served 50,000 clients in attendance. Of that though, the majority were in that groups between about 150 and 275.
Got it.
But I can give you an exact amount.
Yeah, I, you know, for me, the struggle has always been, and, and part of this is just, I've been around here a long time, the frustration we would have that the, you know, and I know there's a limited number of events, I have to weigh this into it, but to have to host the Arvada Chamber of Commerce events in Westminster or, you know, somewhere else because there wasn't a big enough space. Now, my ego is not so large that it has to be in the city limits of Arvada. If indeed, you know, it's such a small number that, you know, for, for three events a year, you know, we're not going to be able to do three events a year and within our city limits, you know, that's, that's information I need to be able to intelligently make that decision.
So we, I, I'd be able to provide you the number and then the event itself-
Great.
And the estimate and the actual attendance.
That'd be great.
Could we get the revenue associated with those as well?
Yes.
And the net as well, gross and net?
Yes.
Roughly estimate?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we were to turn over, and it sounds like we may or may not have a discussion of date certain, we're not going to make a decision on that tonight, obviously, but we'll have an executive session and have some further discussions. If we were to turn over the operations of the Arvada events in its present form to the nonprofit, would you be able to count those individuals coming to chamber events, coming to all the other events that Mr. Marriott comes to because he doesn't want to be an art person but, but still comes to the Arvada Center? Would you be able to count those towards your numbers? Because Jack Barryhill told me you could, but-
Yes.
He's only a judge, so.
The answer is yes.
Okay.
Before you answer that, I am an art person.
And, and Mr. Marriott, you're definitely a humanities person.
Yeah, because those kind of events are sort of humanities, I mean, that's the way I look at it. Okay, so, you know, I mean, it's, it's always been, you know, and I've supported this center for decades. I believe in it, I, I try to attend as many events as I can, I've shouted from the, you know, the podium many a time that the Arvada Center is a crown jewel of the city of Arvada, and it is. And I want to keep it that way. And that's, that's the bottom line for me. I want it to succeed. At the same time, I don't want the community to lose an asset that's important in terms of having a place for those who are more into the humanities side than the art side, have a place to go do those things in our community. You know, certainly the, the Hilton Garden Inn's been a nice little addition, but I don't, what's the mass, maximum capacity there's like 150 or?
180.
180, you know, and that can certainly handle some events. But our taxpayers have put a lot of money into the Arvada Center over the years to have what we have now, I'd hate for that to just totally go away from, from the humanities side. The, the approach here is, gives some satisfaction to me that it would cover the vast majority of events. I, I don't have a lot of heartburn as to who's making it, in fact, to the extent that the revenue goes to the Arvada Center instead of to the Arvada Events, you know, that's a, that's a net positive to me because it reduces the ask on us to have to fill a gap somewhere else. You know, it's all just the, you know, the, the money's fungible, I just assume, you know, if it, if it benefits you all more than it benefits us because you get the science and SCFD credit for it as well, that seems like a positive, positive outcome, so. But I, I just don't want us to lose a major asset to the, to the citizens unless it's not that important in terms of an asset. Yes, Gordon?
Additional study would really be needed though to drill into the events themselves and the timing of them to match up to what the Arvada Center needs as far as classroom space. Since last March, we've been tasked with finding as much space as possible that could be turned over to the Arvada Center. We've been able to find 149 dates that work, but it's equally true that so many of the most popular times that our clients are looking for to host their events are the very same times that would be definitely filled by the Arvada Center. So it's not just a comparison saying any group that's between 100 and, 150 and 275 could easily move over. There's a lot of nuances that would have to be explored based on the time of the year, the date, and that's time of the day that that event is actually scheduled.
So we need to get that information as well for our next discussions on this.
Mr. Marriott also had that. We'd also have to look at if something like this was going to occur, the operational impacts on the other side of Arvada Events, which is the operation of the other food and beverage facility. So you, you know, this, this will require a lot of work, but we're willing to do it if that's what the council would like us to do.
Got it. Okay, what else does anybody want to do on this? Do we want direct staff to do some more research on the issues that have just been described? And then we'll have probably an executive session for instructions to negotiators and, and have some discussions. Mr. Marriott?
Thank, thank you. I, I would think I would agree with that approach. I would agree as well that I would like to see kind of a little deeper dive, a little more detail about kind of our events and, and utilization of the center and, and maybe from the Arvada Center as well about, you know, kind of a little more detail on that part of it. And, and then, yeah, I think, I think then instructing our negotiators on what to do is probably the appropriate approach, so be what I'd like.
Okay. Mr. McGough?
It seems to me that we should be saying to the staff, give us a date certain that we can talk about, so that everybody can be talking about whenever that particular date is, to say, now, what are the things that would have to be done between now and then? What would be the impacts? Given that everything else in the city is changing and, you know, what, if we had established a date sometime back, it would not have the same impacts or repercussions now that establishing a date. But I'd like us to work with at least a draft, a tentative date, so that we're not just waiting to determine a date. Let's say we establish it as two years from now, to say, this is when it's going to happen. Now, what are the impacts of that date? And then we can, you know, discuss around that. Is it enough time? Do we need more time? What are the unanticipated, what are the unforeseen, hitherto unforeseen impacts of doing this? But I think we need to move beyond just the discussions that we've been having. I think we need to get something out on the table that we can all work toward. It may turn out that the date needs to be changed, but I think we need to work toward a, a date, that's the central, that's the central question. The agreement was, the agreement indicated- The agreement was, the agreement indicates that we will turn over 100% of the Center to the nonprofit board. Let's move it along in some kind of way. And I think that's the way to do it.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
No, I would, I think I agree with Mr. McGough in that regard. That gives us a better understanding. I think it would also be interesting to look at, and I don't know if it violates any of the nonprofit rules and regulations, but, and again, I'm just saying what the mayor said, but if, what if they took over for some period of time until the transition, Arvada Events, and could also use, you know, I thought that was a good idea. And so I think it would be interesting to understand from their perspective, what does that look like? What's the financial impact on this side? You know, as part of that longer discussion of, yep, two days, or two years from today, if in fact that were the day, here's what would have to happen, and here are the impacts along that. So I appreciate Mr. McGough saying that, I think I would agree with it.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I agree also that if we are going to talk about a date certain, that it should be in a timeline that the Arvada Center thinks that you could raise those funds. So if you are, if you think that three or four years is better on a capital campaign, what's realistic in your mind? And that should be where the date certain is, is after you raise it, then you've got to construct it, and then there's still that time period of uncertainty of where the money comes from, what's happening at the Center, what's the downtime during construction, what are the costs, what's the liability there, and who's going to fund the difference? All the while, we're trying to build some streets and maintain infrastructure.
Yeah, that's, certainly, we have a lot of priorities for our general funds. And the irony here is, if there's a thought that we may want to do another conference center in conjunction with private sector, either down at 56th and Wadsworth or someplace else in our community, if we're going to have a financial obligation for that, we're certainly not going to have ability to help contribute to your capital campaign. We can't do both. I mean, that's, and it just feels kind of wrong, you know, we're having to turn over this asset, and you want more money towards remodeling and updating that asset for your benefit, while at the same time, we've got to replace that asset somewhere else. So we can do one or the other, I don't think we can do both. So, you know, I think the consensus is, let's see what staff has input in terms of the impacts upon Arvada Events with what we're talking about, get some numbers in terms of how many events this really does impact, and then what staff recommendations and what our discussions are in terms of a date certain. I like Ms. Miller's comments in terms of, let's incorporate into whatever that transfer date is, that it's realistic in light of your capital campaign and how long you're going to need for that, as part of that discussion, and we'll certainly be opening the hearing from you all as to how to make that work. I mean, the bottom line is, we want to have the Arvada Center continue to have success, to grow in those successes, at the same time, making sure that we have the humanities side of what the Arvada Center has traditionally meant for our community continue to be met. So, did that give you enough direction, Mr. Devon?
Yes, and there's some information I think we can provide for you by the end of the week, and then other information, obviously, that will take more time.
I agree with Mr. McGough, we don't want to kick the can down the road, we want to move on this. We've certainly shown that the intent was to have a 100% transfer. It was kept very open-ended, it's time to not have that be open-ended. Okay? Anything else, Mr. Devon?
No.
Okay, thank you all. Healthy discussion.